Good morning. Today is April 5th, 2022, meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. If you could please stand with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to adopt these agendas? Second. Move to the second bit. Merkin. Edens. I. Basil. I. Move on to public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If you'd like to make public comment, look for your step forward to the table. Raise your hand on Zoom or dial starting if you are on the phone. I think no one will close public comment number one. Moving on to consideration of proclamation recognizing April 10 through April 16, 2022, as National Animal Care and Control Week. Appreciation Week, sorry.
Whereas the National Animal Care and Control Association has designated second mid-Bailiff Year as Animal Care and Control Officer Appreciation Week. And whereas various federal, state, and local government officials throughout the country take this time to recognize, thank, and commend all animal control officers and animal shelter staff for their dedicated service they provide. And.
Whereas animal control officers and animal care staff provide essential community functions, including the enforcement of animal control laws, protecting the public from disease such as rabies, capture roaming and potentially dangerous animals, investigating reports of animal complaints and welfare. And whereas animal control officers and animal care staff who answer calls for assistance, educate pet owners about responsible animal care, provide for the proper care of animals in their custody to protect the welfare of homeless animals from injury, disease, abuse, starvation, and. Whereas animal control officers and animal control staff continually find living homes for adoptable animals, as well as reunite lost pets with their rightful owners and maintain a live release rate well above 90%. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim April 10 through April 16, 2022, as National Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week, and encourage all citizens to join us in expressing their sincere appreciation for the service and dedication of our animal control employees.
I would move to motion.
Second. Move to the second bit. Merkin.
Hi.
Edens. I. Basil. I. Got several proclamations today. Moving on to consideration of proclamation recognizing April 2022 as Child Abuse Awareness Month. Whereas children are vital to our future success, prosperity, equality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable assets. And whereas all children deserve to have the safe, stable nurturing homes and communities they need to foster their healthy growth and development. And whereas child abuse and neglect are a community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life of a community and. Whereas communities that provide parents with the social support, knowledge of parenting, and child development, and concrete resources they need to cope with stress and nurture their children, ensure all children grow to their full potential. And whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, school, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community and.
Now therefore be it resolved, we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim April 2022 as Child Abuse Awareness Month in Story County. And we call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live.
I do approve of the Child Abuse Awareness Month proclamation. Second. Move to the second bit. Edens. I. Merkin. I. Basil. I. And we have consideration of proclamation recognizing April 2022 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas nationally, one in three women and one in four men will experience some form of sexual assault in their lifetime. And whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month draws attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has implications for every community member. And whereas there's compelling evidence that we can be successful in reducing sexual violence through prevention, education, increased awareness, and holding predators who commit acts of violence responsible for their actions. And. Whereas we must work together to educate our community about what can be done to prevent sexual assault and how to support survivors. And whereas anyone can be a leader in preventing and ending sexual violence. As employers, educators, parents, and friends, we all have an obligation to uphold the basic principle that every individual should be free from violence and fear. And.
Whereas we encourage every person to start conversations about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, and how to help survivors come to network services, and to speak out against harmful attitudes and actions. Now therefore be it resolved, we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim April 2022 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Story County to help our community members, keep our community members safe from this crime, and to stand with survivors and victims of sexual assault. I move adoption to proclamation, April 2022, as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Second. Move to the second bit. Merkin. Hi. Edens. I. Basil. I. Thank you for bringing those forward. Go ahead and get a picture real quick after we get these signed. Great, thank you. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. Moving on to agency reports. We have Central Iowa Tourism Annual Report. If you would step forward to the table. Great. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. I also have some packets of some items that weren't necessarily emailable. Should I just distribute them?
Sure.
Well, thank you so much for allowing me to share an update with you today. And it's so great to be here in person this year instead of over Zoom. So. Just a few highlights for you. Our region includes 35 different counties. We run north and south along Interstate 35, so that I-35 corridor. And not only do folks like yourself, but counties through county government participate. But we have attraction partners, natural resources, bed and breakfasts, everything from a small mom and pop bed and breakfast on up to large casinos and larger hotels. So it's a really diverse and active group. We also have an annual contract with our state tourism office, and they're headquartered under the Iowa Economic Development Authority. We've had that partnership for over 35 years, so very, very proud of that. And. By your county participating, that allows us to access those state partnerships as well. I wanted to share some programming highlights with you, and some of the information was emailed to you. That's on the left side of your packets. On the right side are things that, new things that either weren't emailable or that are new today. But some of the things that we do in partnership with our state office is we administer their grant program, and we also offer scholarships. And folks from Story County are actively involved in securing those funds. This year, our state tourism conference is coming up in two weeks from today. It starts, we have a couple of awards, three in fact, going out to Story County this year. Folks representing Story County, Prairie Rivers staff, a couple of the folks there. We work a lot with their staff there. And then also have someone coming from Peace Printing, like they work with the Iowa Magazine. And that's one of the really great things is these are also available to businesses. So it's not only just nonprofits, but also businesses can apply. So I think sometimes there's not a lot of funding out there for those types of projects and stuff. So we're excited to see that. We also administer, like you mentioned, the tourism grant programs. And this year, the funding level for that increased from $150,000 to $300,000. So we're really excited to see that. And by increasing that amount, they were able to make the grant projects have a little higher threshold as far as the amount of money that folks could receive. And you can see the Ames Convention and Visitors Bureau received this year $10,000 for their, this is Ames video, so they were successful in that project. And then there's some historical information for you on that summary sheet as well. And you can see that last year, there were two projects out of Story County that were funded, $5,000 for the Ames CBB for a driving and walking tour app, and then $5,000 to Prairie Rivers of Iowa for a Lincoln Highway Heritage Byway brochure they were working on. Our role in that is we help provide the reviewers for the grant selection process. And then when they do have a successful grant application, we write the agreement. We monitor their project to make sure that they're complying with the grant requirements. And then when the funds are actually paid, they flow through our office. It's kind of that administering organization, because we work with these folks all the time and are able to help out our state office with that effort. Some of the other things that we do are very, very involved with professional development and networking. And there's details on the handout that you received, as well as in the packets. But we, you know, of course, like a lot of organizations adapted during COVID. We took a lot of our things online. We held day-long recovery sessions, did different things like that. And we're really excited. We've been meeting again now in person since August. And people have said, oh, we're a little bit more comfortable getting together again. So we're very excited to be having good participation at those meetings and industry events. And at each of those, we have a topic, professional development education. But a lot of it is just the networking, that people getting to know each other and able to share what they're doing as well. We've also, but we do continue to have that electronic option as well, because we know not everybody can get away for everything. So we actually have a webinar tomorrow that we're co-hosting with the other regions in our state office about a new meetings and incentive program that's available. And so that will help, like hotel recovery, things like that, and groups that are hosting meetings, conventions, festivals, trade shows, all types of different activities. So excited to help get the information out about that new state program. One of the things that I wanted to mention is our guide training, and that's in your handout. That is a program we're really very, very proud of. We started it three years ago. And in fact, Boone and Story County were our first pilot session that we did and helped to co-host that. And it's really set up for folks that work at museums, attractions, even businesses, agrotourism, things like that, where they can attend this day-long training session. And they get great content and information for how to make their programming better. And then they can sign up for an optional certification program where our trainer, Diane Van Wyngarden, she's with Iowa State University as their tourism specialist, goes out and does an in-person coaching session. And it's really a great program. In fact, I realized as I was looking through things this morning, we need to update that flyer. We've trained over 200 people now with this workshop. And we have 60, over 60 that have completed the optional certification component. And the workshop is $10. We don't want cost to be a barrier, and that actually includes their lunch. So we're super excited for that. And that's coming up on April 26. Folks can still sign up for that. There's information on our website about it if they're interested. Or they can always call our office as well, and we can help them get signed up. We do a limited amount of marketing activities. Our state office really takes the lead in that. But we do do some things as a region. You've got a copy of our Central Iowa Travel Guide. That is last year's guide, and we're anxiously already awaiting our copies of this year's guide. And I know we always kind of line up or sync up with that timing with this presentation. But last year, at this time, this was already at the printers, just like our new one. So I do want to reassure you, there are a couple of county conservation campground information that in that guide, because we'd already gone to print, are out of date. We have that updated for 2022, because you all had shared that out in your county conservation office. It was a couple of the campgrounds in Story County. We got that updated this year. But we use that, it goes out to all of the requests for information that we receive in our office through our website, phone calls, things like that. Also, all across the state in the Iowa Welcome Centers, and then special things that we do with our state fair booths, participation, trade show that we coordinate and do. So it's that one piece that everybody gets. I will say, your county's participation allows us to list the attractions and nonprofits and stuff in there. But those businesses, be it a restaurant, or a hotel, or shopping, those types of things do have to have a private membership. Private membership, I hope, are very affordable. In most cases, for organizations, they're $150 a year. So that gets them listed in that dining or stay section. So if you're wondering why, you know, not everybody's in that portion, that's the reason behind that. But. I mentioned our trade show that we do. We have an event called Travel Level Marketplace. It's a motor coach or group tour focused trade show. We've done it for over 20 years and are excited to be back in person in November with that event. But it's a great way for people to meet face-to-face, one-on-one with those folks, bringing groups into their attraction, maybe coming into their community. We do in a downtown shopping tour, things like that. We also are expanding the audience for that for meeting planners this year, because a lot of those places that come and exhibit at this trade show are also potential sites for meeting planners or a tour that's combined with a meeting. So we're excited about that. And lastly, referenced our Iowa State Fair participation. We have a booth in the Varied Industries Building. It was amazing how many people we got to talk to last year, sharing all the great things to do in Iowa. And people were really looking for those opportunities. We do allow folks, if they are interested in helping to staff our booth, it's at no cost to them. It's just their time and travel and can share out information. So we have a lot of folks that take advantage of that opportunity, and will be taking sign-ups for that as well. But are there any questions that you might have about our group or different programs?
Is this also available as electronic?
It is. Yeah, we have it on our website, and we'll have the new 2022 one on our website shortly. And then information, folks on the website can request a copy of that. They can download it, they can just flip through it. Yes, it's available both in print and electronically.
Are you able to see how many people are downloading or?
Yes, we are. And we, you know, it was amazing with, our requests actually went up. People were still asking and looking for information. We found that especially islands were traveling in Iowa and taking those road trips. But we were also attracting a lot of people from surrounding states because they were looking for things to do in Iowa. You know, of course, the industry is still in recovery mode. There are areas that were, you know, especially hard. But in general, you know, things are starting to turn back around.
Is it interacting? Sorry. Is it interactive? So if I open it up on your website and I wanted to click on Trader Public Library, for example, would it link to their website?
If there is a link in that listing, yes, it will take them to that, to that listing. Same way with our advertisers, you know, the folks that advertise takes them to that page or information. It's amazing what they can do with technology.
Questions? The scholarship awards, do you understand what the scholarship awards consist of?
They are to attend our state tourism conference. So it pays for the registration fee, and then the applicant's local match is considered their mileage or their hotel expenses.
And then on the second page of your handout. Yeah, county benefits of Central Iowa Tourism Region. It says, "Elbowresters will appoint two representatives to represent your county and region."
In the case of Story County, what you've traditionally done, and you can change this each year or whenever you want, but what Story County has traditionally done is appointed someone from the Story City area, as far as like through their Chamber Tourism Group. And then also in the past, the Ames Convention and Visitors Bureau serves in that role. Crystal Davis was in that role for a number of years. I know she's left there, but it's up to you, as the County Board of Supervisors, to determine who you want to appoint in those roles.
Yeah. I don't remember like the math or. That's why that caught my attention, I thought, I want to say that.
Well, like, it probably dates back from years and years ago where they would point like those two organizations, and then whoever was in those seats where we had as listed, which is common for counties, but certainly if you want to make changes, you can.
So Ames Convention and Visitors Bureau and the city of Story City.
The Story City Greater Chamber Connection. Yep.
From the.
Yep.
A percentage. Do you by any chance have anything on file as last time? It might be.
Probably dates back to when Rich Harder was at the Ames CBB in Julie Week. So it's, again, it's a totally judgment call from your organization. Some counties also will appoint like a tourism organization and maybe their county conservation board, someone from there.
I just want to make sure that if we're supposed to have representation, and we actually have representation. Right. So we can follow up maybe with those two and say, are you representing Story County?
Well, I know that both of those organizations get our emails and are involved in.
Do you want to contact them?
Oh, sure. I can. Yeah, and I will, I will reach out to them and ask them if they want to. Do you want me to ask if they want to continue in that role?
And let us know.
Okay.
Yeah. All right.
That would be great, great. I can brush off my this.
Yeah.
Right, and how active they are.
Sure.
Yeah. Sure. They're attending. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, if they don't, if they're saying they don't have the time or they're not really into it, we can, you know, we can want somebody else. But just to make sure that we have their representation.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anything else?
Great, thank you so much. Thanks for the additional information. We will have an agency report from Child Serve. Good morning, Kate. You are muted. There you go.
Thanks. Good morning. Everyone can hear me now?
Yeah, thank you.
Perfect. Well, I wish that I was with you in person, but I really appreciate your flexibility and still allowing for the Zoom attendance. Good morning, everyone. I did send off a report that I think you should have in your packet. And I'll just go over some of the highlights in there. Just for a quick kind of level set, Child Serve is a large nonprofit in the state of Iowa. Our main location is based down in Johnston. But we do have sites in Des Moines, Iowa City, and then in Ames, which is where I oversee the programs and services. So speaking mostly about Ames and the services that Child Serve provides in Story County, we are growing. That's kind of the, going to be the theme of today. We are now at over 250 staff members in the Ames location. Many of those are PerDiM, working in our community-based services in Respite and SCL. But we do tend to have 40 to 60 part-time, full-time staff in the building on weekdays, providing outpatient childcare, mental health, ABA, and our day programs, which include Autism Day Program and a medical childcare service. Exciting news for us. In this last year, we began providing some mental health therapy services out of our Ames location. We share a mental health therapist with Johnston. She's here three days a week, and we're hoping to see that program grow as we work on more space. We are definitely reaching the limits of our current building, and I'll talk about that a little bit later on. We are working on growing our footprint here in Ames and Story County. We have began in the last five years an Ames Community Advisory Board, and that has really started to pick up steam. We now have 10 members from the Story County area that participate on that. And the main goal of that organization is to just give feedback on community engagement and to help us expand our our knowledge and with the, with the community and with supporting organizations in the area. I think you can read through some of the current accreditations. I think some of the stuff I'm most proud of for the Ames Center is our five-star QRS rating for our childcare. COVID has been a huge hit to a lot of our community-based programs in particular. Childcare saw a large decline in services, but we are starting to see that come back and have a waitlist again for children requiring and needing services. We continue to struggle with staffing in a lot of our areas and have been working hard with our HR team on addressing wage issues and everything so that we can continue to be competitive in our hiring market. In the last year, we did serve almost 850 children out of our Ames location, which has been a huge jump from a pretty steep decline over the last few years with the pandemic. We still have some lag in our Respite Supportive Community Living Programs, where we're seeing our largest amount of growth right now, and where we are able to hire staff to meet those needs has been in our outpatient rehabilitation program, applied behavioral analysis, Autism Day Program, medical childcare. Many of our children that come in, we see a large age from birth through 22. Actually, we do have some young adults that are older than 22 that are receiving durable medical equipment, dehabilitation, and respite services with us. Majority of the children that we serve are between birth and 10. But we do see that whole. But we do see that whole age range. Many of those children and young adults are receiving multiple services for us, with the average being over two services per child. So um we take a lot of pride in being able to offer a lot of coordination of services that are needed for families with uh children with special healthcare needs. Um, some of the highlights over this last year, um Applied Behavioral Analysis is a um behavior intervention program that gets uh utilized oftentimes for children with um autism spectrum disorder. Um, it is available to other children, young adults that have um uh concerns with behaviors. We currently have two board-certified um behavior analysts and are serving twelve children. We also program heavily with autism day program and outpatient therapy in that area. Uh, so those children are receiving a multitude of services to um help prepare them and um improve their ability to integrate in their communities. Child uh classrooms and with their families. Um, we did do a renovation project across the street with some space that we've leased um in twenty-ten. That uh twenty-ten Philadelphia is the address there. Um, that uh renovation project has been completed and it allowed us to hire that second uh board-certified behavior analyst, the B C B A, and expand that ABA program. Allowed us to open a second autism day program classroom and um also to hire additional outpatient therapists to provide services for those children receiving the autism services, but also to continue to grow their caseload. So we have been um expanding our outpatient therapy program um significantly uh with the ability to expand our footprint a little bit. Also allowed us to um begin offering our mental health services. Uh, we talk a little bit in the highlights on your packet just about the effect of the pandemic and um seeing our return to some pre-pandemic levels. Um, we continue to navigate our mitigation strategies to offer the safest environment for our children and um still have an active um COVID nineteen uh team from through our emergency preparedness program that meet uh monthly to uh review our current mitigation strategies in place and decide uh where we want to move going forward. For the most part, we've had really uh good compliance with our families and uh the community that we work with. Um, and we're very grateful for everyone's continued efforts in maintaining a safe environment for the children that we serve. We are gearing up for our summer camp programs, which we have maintained throughout the pandemic. Uh, last year, we were unable to do them in Ames. We uh utilized a church in uh Huxley, which uh was great, but we are excited to be able to offer that again in the Ames area as that is a easier commute for many of our staff and families. So we are working on getting that all set up and seeing uh good interest and return to that um pretty popular program. Uh, I think the biggest thing that we are excited to announce uh and talk through with you is just that we are in uh the process of beginning a large construction project to uh add an add uh to our building. So we are kind of in a silent phase of a campaign uh with our foundation team, just starting to talk with members of the community about our goals and where we would like to go. Um, and we do have a member of the community who has agreed to lead our campaign. So hopefully in the next few months or so, we'll start to see some movement around that. But the goal is to uh double our current footprint when it comes to physical space and allow us to grow programs um and double the number of children that we're serving on the Ames campus in five years or so. So please don't expect all that growth in the next six months. Um, we are uh putting in this investment to really turn the Ames Center into more of a regional center. Um, so that uh we can expand and improve upon the services that we offer in Story County, but also be a hub for services for the surrounding counties, um because there is not a lot available throughout the state. Um, we also hope to start exploring the potential for satellite clinics in surrounding counties and communities. After we have kind of finished this project focusing on our regional center here in Ames. We are at the phase of, we have received a uh state childcare grant as part of this project is expanding our autism day programs. So some of our specialty childcare programs. Um, so we are hoping to get some uh groundbreaking and site work happening in June of this year to um start utilizing that grant that we have received. But that is the big exciting news and what takes lots and lots of my time. Um, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys might have about Child Serve and what we're up to these days.
It looks like about three quarters your patients were outpatient therapy in the last year. Is that correct?
Yep, that is our largest program. Um, a lot of those um children are receiving additional services um on top of outpatient. So um the eight hundred and forty-nine children that we serve, that's just kind of the unique number of children that we serve. But many of them um are doubled up in other programs as well.
I can see that because of those, the numbers add up to more than eight forty-nine. So what what are you, if you're talking about um your Ames facility becoming a satellite for other counties, what do you see that would be primarily offered or what people would be looking at from those other counties?
So the largest amount of need that we see from our families um include outpatient therapy, uh mental health and psychology services, um and then our autism-based services. Those are kind of the biggest areas. We are going to continue to maintain our childcare, our medical childcare um as well as our respite and SCL services. And those um would be adjuncts to probably the larger draw for those first services that I mentioned. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is there an autism? Is that correct?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Um, and the majority of the building expansion is focused on uh more spaces for outpatient services like therapy, mental health therapy, and applied behavioral analysis, also more classrooms for autism day program. And then some renovation to current spaces to just improve uh our childcare and medical childcare spaces as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
This is Lisa. I just have a a question or two. Um, you noted in your highlights about staffing levels. Can you just talk to us a little bit of where your avatar stacking levels, kind of what your needs are? I know for a number of organizations, they are struggling to get some direct care staff. I'm just wondering if you're the the amount that you are dealing with as well.
Yeah, uh, direct care staff is definitely an area of uh concern, particularly for some of our nine non-licensed positions. So our childcare, respite and supportive community living. And uh, you know, it is everything from getting even and applying for the positions and then maintaining them. We've seen a higher level of churn. People coming, starting and not staying for long as well. We are um utilizing, we did receive a large stabilization grant for our childcare program as well as ARPA funds for our um waiver-based services, which is respite and supportive community living. And the majority of that funding is going back into um wages uh and uh retention bonuses to um help with uh recruitment and hiring. Um, we would love to try and keep as much of it in wages and then figure out sustainability plans to maintain that for those staff there. Some of our lowest wages and would love to be able to maintain a higher wage. They work very, very hard. So that has just gone into place in the last um for childcare, just in the last week, we were able to start applying uh some adjustments to both our starting uh wage as well as our current staff. And we are working on a proposal now for our respite and supportive community living. Um, and then we're also looking at other things like improved mileage reimbursement for our staff that are out in the community and um transporting children um to and from and uh trying to be more creative in the pool of um potential applicants that we are um approaching and uh recruiting from.
Thanks. And then my last question is, um, I believe you do only serve up to the age of twenty-one or through the age of twenty-one?
Um, for a lot of our programs, that is the cap. Um, we do have some programs, like I was mentioning earlier, durable medical equipment. We serve Medicare in that regard, and so we serve people of all ages if they have that need. Um, our dehabilitation program is for um young adults. And so I believe we have some as old as twenty-eight that are still participating in that summer program. Our Johnston Services have uh begun utilizing what we call Child Serve Plus, um which is up through the age of thirty for some of our long-term care. And so we continue to explore ways that we can help support, at least through transitions, as young adults are looking to leave our services and go to some of our adult-based services here in Story County. Um, just continue to explore ways that we can at least uh soften that transition so that there's not such an abrupt ending of our services as they are looking for that. We have also increased our um uh social work and intake uh F T Es. So we had a full-time social worker. We have a case manager on our team that is based out of Ames, and he is now starting to do fifty percent of his time in that social work. And they do a lot of that um care coordination and um uh just family advocacy work to help with that transition into the adult services.
Thank you. Kate, do you find there's sufficient um services as as um children are transitioning from your services into adult services? Do you do you find there's sufficient um services available for them? Or do they have to go outside of the county?
We do have to look outside of the county. Um, I I think we have good working relationships with uh the county services that we do have. And and uh and and so we are able to help families navigate that. Um, but sometimes it so often uh those transitions just depend on timing and what is available at that moment in time when it becomes a a critical move for the family. Um, so we do often help pair them outside of um the county. We also um depending on the age range, will work within our network at Child Serve as we do have some group homes that um sometimes are um just down in Pope County that uh work for the family as well. But I mean, we have even looked out of state for families at times. Um, but usually we are able to um identify something in the Story County or surrounding county areas. It could always be better.
Of course. And do you do you find that most of the families that you serve, are they from Story County? Or do you have a lot of folks coming from outside of Story County? If you said there aren't a lot of services.
Sure. Um, the last time that I looked at the statistics, um Story County and Pope County are our two largest counties. Um, but we do have uh children being served in the Ames location from twenty-two surrounding counties. So they are coming from a distance. Um, some of our farthest counties are are often only coming on uh one weekend a month to receive some respite overnight services um that they qualify through through their waiver for. So, you know, it's not always a story of somebody driving from Mason City three times a week to receive outpatient therapy, but it's not unheard of for families to do that from Marshalltown, from Fort Dodge, from Webster City, from Lake City even. So we do get some some um pretty heavy traveling.
It's a very valuable service.
Thank you. We're really proud of everything that we do.
Thank you so much, Kate. Appreciate the work.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, moving on, we've got uh Community Outreach and Economic Development, right? And good morning.
Did you use the table? Okay, I was gonna say. So uh, believe it or not, uh some months have passed since my last update, and Nikki was due for her update workforce. So we decided to do two at once and and combine our efforts on this presentation. So um up on the in your packet, there's uh information for both our presentations. And I'll go through mine first in the Story County Outreach. Since my last update, I have made personal contact with every single community in the Story County area for our for my region. Roland, I've seen you and talked to you several times on different issues as well. But uh and Roland, just this past week, I've been attending a childcare summit and community planning event. Uh, Gilbert's uh ARPA review and infrastructure targets, they're targeting with some infrastructure dollars coming out of D C. Ziering's Housing Infrastructure and Tiff, Colo Housing Developments, Collins Catalyst Brand for their downtown business expansion and Main Street improvements. Maxwell, of course, that's the Casey's Closure. Um, and housing project has also stalled as well. Cambridge ongoing Opera House Project and Slater's Community Center Library Project. So um I have made personal contact. I know that was one of the goals I mentioned the last time I was here in front of you. Uh, I have, I want to say this very, very clear as much as possible is that everyone is hungry to grow the community. I am seeing everyone, COVID is kind of unleashed everyone and they are moving forward with projects that have been on the planning stages or were just launched in twenty-nineteen. They are coming back around again. So there is a lot of enthusiasm right now that are in rural areas of Story County. Um, on the next page, you'll see the other initiatives that I've either signed on or been asked to join. Um, some of them haven't really moved forward yet, but some of them have. Story County Housing is moving forward, rural broadband with Supervisor Merkin. Rural ambulance service, I have not done anything yet, but that is on my radar because I've been asked to keep that on my radar as well. Um, ARPA assistance, I am getting lots of ARPA questions and importantly, working with Leanne on that. Um, it's not just what um the county ARPA is, it's also their ARPA because the continuing headlines coming out of D C are changing guidelines in Congress. Clawing back. So there's a lot of interpretations out there as well. So that is what I've been helping with in assuring them that what they are seeing on the news is not necessarily correct because that is just public debate, not policy set yet. So calming a lot of nerves. Uh, federal infrastructure bill assistance, joint nuisance enforcement position that I was up here with Amelia for a couple of weeks ago. Um, policy work and legislature in D C. I have taken over policy for the chamber uh as of February for the E D C as well. Um, I've been down in Des Moines and also working on a policy trip out to D C in June. Uh, one of the things I can tell you is a benefit of this work is for Story County especially, we are no longer uh restricted on some of the housing uh assistance that we had in the past as a top ten county in Iowa. So now Story County is going to be able to receive additional assistance in that area as well. That was initially uh not available to us in the rural areas because of our population caps that were in place on that. So that's an additional bonus for the rural areas as well. Um, upcoming events, Iowa Rural Development Conference. Um, I will miss the first day of that one. I'm going to be down in D C, uh not D C, down in Des Moines for day at the Capitol, but I'll be back in the afternoon and doing the housing uh on Monday, right?
Yes.
Yes. Monday afternoon, I'll be there with Supervisor Merkin at that and then also attending that as part of the Story County delegation. In June, our policy trip out to D C, we are sitting up meetings with uh Transportation, Commerce, um USDA. Um, and also trying to get, uh, we have confirmed meetings set with all our legislators out there as well. So that is also additional thing. Um, June, uh, this was originally scheduled for May. We are planning a housing summit with the newest tools coming out of the state legislature. We pushed it back a month because of the, I want to say, we were over optimistic in the legislature's ability to be done in April. Um, so we moved it back to June to give us more time. Me and Leanne are going to start uh working on that uh and do a rural housing uh open workshop, if you will, for Ames and rural communities of what they can use and what tools they can work on. We're going to work with Story County Housing Trust and Brenda with that. So and that is my region. I'll open up any questions for me before Nikki moves on. I'll open up any questions for me before Nikki moves on. So, questions?
So, good morning supervisors. So last time I was here, I kind of gave more slides, excuse me, on things that I'd done. And you really wanted to kind of see those Excel spreadsheets and, you know, the demographics and things like that. So I did give you the snapshot of the first quarter. And then also some graphs, sometimes it's just kind of nice to see some of those demographics pulled out. And what does that really look like, you know, for those? I will say for the first quarter, really excited to see, I believe that there was twenty-three students or twenty-seven students that had gone through. And we had welding, we had advanced PLC, we had CNAs. So there was a wide variety, which is great to see. CNA is definitely still the biggest one that I, you know, get questions about. But it's also something that's very needed in a lot of different areas. So I don't think that's a bad thing at all. One of the things for just reaching out to people is we added an actual form on our website so that when they're trying to, you know, the most of the time, you know, contact Nikki, you know, at the chamber and things like that. But there's actually a form for them to fill out to just let me know what their interests are, their name, their, you know, phone number, email address, things like that. So that so that they also feel that, you know, the information's being received and then I can reach out to them directly. So that's kind of added. And I think that's that's honestly been huge. We've had it up since February. It was something that we did mid-February and I've probably had each week, I've probably had at least five different inquiries just from that. And it's been welding and CNA, it's in construction. So I think it's nice to have a place for people to go to, to get that direct contact with me. Yeah, so I I know there's a lot that goes into the retraining initiative, but those are definitely all the statistics for this quarter. And I will take any questions.
What other outreach efforts are you doing?
So this last quarter, I tried some of those informational sessions. I actually partnered with Barb Mitten from Food at First. And we tried to do some Nevada and Colo. We did not get, you know, a lot of people. And we, you know, really kind of tried to, the meals that she was doing, we'd put like little flyers in and things like that. I also tried to do another one up in Story City and meeting at the libraries always seems to be, you know, a really nice, common, you know, neutral ground for everybody. We're just not seeing people utilizing those. And I don't know, I mean, we tried to do two different timeframes. We do a three PM and a six PM. And I always just stayed throughout the whole time, no matter what, just in case someone showed up at four fifteen. But I'm not really seeing that. So I'm gonna kind of step away from that for a little bit because it's just not working. Honestly, the Facebook posts that we put out there, we get a lot of feedback from that. And still just, you know, reaching out to the contacts throughout the community. You know, just letting, you know, more people are actually knowing about what the program is. But a lot of times they'll reach back out to me like, hey, Nikki, what is it that you can really do? Like, here's someone that I'd like you to talk to. So.
Have you worked with the Bridge Home?
Yes, yes. Yep, I have worked with the Bridge Home and sent them information. And they've sent back a few questions, things like that. I don't have anybody directly from them yet. But same thing with the probation officers. I've got one that has contacted me. I also went to a informational thing on workforce and like retention and things like that that Sarah's had put down on down in Des Moines and spoke to the prisons in Iowa. And I was like, well, if you have people coming, you know, back to Story County from Newton or Mitchellville, you know, please definitely reach out to me. So I reached out to all the prisons and, you know, gave them, you know, the information. A lot of them are already kind of starting to use a little bit of DMAC, you know, while they're still in prison. But I still wanted to let them know that, you know, if there's some that don't get that chance, you know, and they're coming back to Story County, here's a way for them to do that. So yeah, so still reaching out to anybody and everybody.
Great.
Yeah.
And the corrections folks here do have a program going now where they're trying to stay in touch with the people who go who go to prison in Story County and probably will return. They'll check to connect and they're using tablets. They're doing a lot of things to keep the people who are in prison in touch with the community. And you might follow up with Terry on that.
Okay, yeah.
Ask if there's any, you know, if they can, you know, if they have any people.
Yes.
If they're gotten that they have in that program, maybe start talking to them, you know, earlier on.
Yeah, yeah. And I've told her, you know, if her, any of her probation officers need me to speak to someone, if I can, you know, I can always, you know, give them information, however that's feasible for them. So.
Yeah.
I'm here to do my segment of our work.
Oh, hundred percent. Yes.
I was also going to ask if you had done, I know you did some work with the high schools. You're planning some follow-up for high school.
Yeah, I do a lot of work with all of the different high schools. As we're kind of transitioning to the summer, you know, a lot of them are really talking about, you know, graduation and things like that. I've talked to a few of the schools about doing like a signing day for those that, you know, maybe don't get that athletics scholarship that they're going to go into welding or they're going to go into trades or whatever that is. So we've talked about that and they're all really excited about it. We'll just see, you know, graduations coming up very quickly. So we'll see if we can get it done this year. If not, it is something. And then I'm also partnering with Scan and Be Rare Initiative, another nonprofit. We're doing a FASC clinic. So we've got that kind of going to, you know, see if people need help, things like that. But there's all kinds of other different initiatives that, just staying in connection with the high schools and what's going on. I've been at the Ames CTE. They did like an advisory group on what that's going to look like. Next year, we had two different meetings, month beginning in March and month at the end. So just really trying to stay involved at all the different schools. So, yeah.
I'd like to see only two, last, only two students.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And it was it was disheartening, you know, because it was it was kind of back to back almost, you know, as they were very close. And and it was the same program. But, you know, I hopefully we hear back from them because we've told them, you know, if you would like to try this again, please reach back out. One, you know, just unfortunately got COVID and was out two weeks and then just didn't feel that they could go on because they had missed so much in the classroom portion to move into the actual welding lab, which I completely understand. And kind of the same with the other one, you know, they kind of had struggled through that classroom part. And so, yeah, so we've told them, you know, reach back out to us. DMAC has even offered, like, even if you just want to do, like, maybe your forklift certificate, because that can still get you, you know, a great job. So we definitely try to work with the ones that, and thank goodness it's only been two.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions? Yeah.
Thank you both.
Perfect. Thank you.
Moving on to consideration of minutes from March twenty-two and March twenty-nine. I'm with approval of both minutes. Yes. Next, we have consideration of personnel actions.
We will approve the personnel actions as presented.
Second. Seconded, Merkin.
I.
Helen.
I.
Basil.
Right.
Moving on to consent agenda.
I need to pull one item and I'll bring it back next week. It's item eleven. Investigator, there was there's something, there was just an error on it. And before we.
Okay, I'll take care of that. And I want to pull number fourteen, the Nevada request. I'll answer that. Couple of questions. Okay, so. So enter team a motion to approve consent agenda. Before mentioned changes. I have a consent agenda excluding that number, what is it, eleven and fourteen. Second. Seconded, Helen. Merkin. Basil. We want to discuss that right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was my intent. Okay. So I know that Nevada, this is the request to their supply Lusza. And I just have a couple of questions for Joby. So you know, I have met with the mayor and I may have a question for Jordan as well. And I see that he's on a credit of a call ahead of the meeting. I know we were having some conversations with Ethan and what they might need to provide. And I believe they're just having, using the practice lap for a music location.
Yeah, for for a music stage is my understanding. After discussing this with Ethan Anderson, he didn't have any concerns with it. He would just like the the city in Nevada provide a shift, stating that they have liability insurance.
Yes, Jordan available?
Yes, yes, I am. Hi, how are you guys today?
Good.
Good. Yeah, I don't I don't think that would be an issue at all. We can reach out to Mick, our insurance agent, and and ask them to provide that. But yeah, I don't see that as an issue at all.
Right. And then I guess my other question is, I know that your event will have alcohol at overall at your event, but you're not looking at using, having any vendors on county property. Is that correct? Just just the music?
That, yeah, that is correct. And actually, we've we've been debating on whether or not we even want the music on there. And maybe we'll just put the the kid activities there. But we will, we will go with your advice on whichever you would prefer. I I think if the music was on there, there'd definitely be no alcohol because they'd probably want people to stay away from the stage. But yeah, no, there's no intentions on having any alcohol on on county property.
That was just mainly my clarification. I know when I spoke with Ethan as well, he called me on a separate issue. So I I talked with them. And he just talked about, you know, we could approve this, having their event on county property. Felt the need to make anything more clear, we could add something to say, but not allow the sale of alcohol on county property or consumption. Or can they, maybe we wouldn't. I was looking at our policy and that might be a question for.
It's public.
It's public. So I don't know that you can stop that. You can't have them, you can stop them from selling it. But if somebody walks through on public property, I don't know how you stop that. Yeah.
So we we will have barricades up to prevent anybody from bringing out alcohol outside of the actual area. And I would be happy to provide that map for you guys as well. That way you're aware of it.
That'd be helpful. Thank you.
Yep. And if you want us to submit anything else, we would be happy to submit as well.
Thank you, Jordan.
Would it be necessary, maybe not, but to have a statement from the insurance company stating that the county property would be covered under liability insurance for this event?
That's what that's insurance certificate is.
When I saw that certificate, that's what I thought. Is going to mention this. It's not just that they have liability insurance, but it's going to mention this event.
List the county as what is as additionally insured for the event. Yeah, yeah, that's what I enjoyed with Ethan when he called. So I'd make the motion that we approve the requests from the city of Nevada to use the county administration parking lot for the pizza pie Lusza event on May fourteenth and that they provide an insurance certificate for the event that lists the county as insured. Second. We did seconded. I. All right. Basil, I. Thanks, Jordan.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, hopefully you guys will be able to participate as well. It's going to be a fun event. So thank you very much.
Sounds like it will be.
Have a great day.
You too. Thank you. Got no public hearing items today. Additional items, discussion and consideration of five-year secondary roads construction projects. Hi, Darren.
Morning. We held a workshop back on March eighth. Let's talk about the five-year construction program. Since then, I haven't received any additional public comments. If you have, if you so, let me know. No, the biggest changes to the program from the prior year, I would say two, one is the one hundred and fiftieth bridge over the Skunk River got pushed back a few years because we had a, actually a number of bridges on our paved routes that take precedent. One in particular, an S fourteen, we bumped into the next year already because the last bridge inspection showed some rapid deterioration on that bridge. And our paved routes take priority. And then on the paving, we did move S fourteen overlay that south and the beta, we pushed that back one year for two reasons. One, because that's fourteen bridge I just talked about is going to close that road. And two, the DOTs can be building their S fourteen construction at the north end by Highway thirty. So that's going to impact asphalt trucks getting done there as well. So we pushed that back a year. Other than that, everything stayed the same from our workshop except for some funding that came out of the new federal bill. Actually, not necessarily from the bill, but from the DOT policy, they're changing our swap program. So anything we had in the program that was swap, we have to change it back to federally funding. I'll get a little bit into more of that in my quarterly report. So that's going to cause some shifting of funds because with swap, swap was funded at a hundred percent. Federal aid projects are funded eighty percent. So we're going to have to come up with a twenty percent match on all of them now. So there'll be a little changing around next year to account for that. And we're constantly looking at bridges and identified one or two more that might do some shifting next year. But this year is going to stay the same. The good news is that S fourteen bridge I'm talking about, since I contacted the DOT last fall about us adding that to the program and using swap, they're going to kind of grandfather that one in. So that one will stay swap because we're doing it next year already. So that'll be a hundred percent funded. Federally, it also takes a longer project development period. So we won't be able to meet the letting we wanted. So that's another reason I'm letting this move forward with it. So that will stay swap. That's the good news. Everything else in the program will be pushed to federally. We have a a map on our website if somebody's interested in looking at the five-year program map. Other than that, I will entertain your questions, but I would recommend approval of the proposed five-year program.
I would need approval of secondary road five-year program. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have departmental report with planning and development quarterly report. No, good discussion. Consideration of purchase for order in Axel. Sorry. We got a couple of.
You had fourteen. I want.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I apologize. Especially consideration of purchase order for one new and a maximum.
Okay, the reason I have this on is an additional item. Normally, as for unbudgeted items, this is budgeted, but it's an FY twenty-three. We're ordering it early. So that's one reason it's on here. And secondly, I just wanted to point out a couple of things with it. One, we budgeted two hundred and forty thousand for this truck. Our last tandem truck was purchased in twenty twenty and it was two hundred and fourteen thousand. We knew there's going to be some increases, so we budgeted two forty. It came in at two hundred and eighty thousand. It's just the way the equipment's going right now. Not only is it two eighty, we may not even see it in FY twenty-three. They're saying it's a year and a half out at least. So it might be twenty-four before you can see the truck. This is across the board. There's other counties we've heard from that actually had approved trucks. And right before delivery, they come and say, we need an extra fifteen, twenty thousand or you're not getting the truck. The counties are paying it because they. The counties are paying because they're like, we'll sell it somewhere else if you don't want it. But they had approved contracts and they are asking for more money. That's the state of the market right now.
They guarantee this price?
Well, I would assume so because the fact that that extra cost in now, and part of that extra cost is the new emission standards going effect in the FY24s. That's at least a $10,000 increase for that, they're saying. So that's another reason it's going up. But I don't know. I assume they'll get, they'll, you know, honor this, but until it shows up.
You need approval to, to order it now, but it's not going to go into FY22. And you may even have to look from 23 to 24.
I have approval of the purchase order for one use tandem axle flow. Power, power rate with 280,790, right, 280,790. I can't even say that. Move the seconded head wide, smirk it eye, face the eye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're in discussion and consideration of FY23 benefit renewal.
Hi, good morning. So it is that time of year that we come to the board with our benefit renewal for fiscal year '23. We did take a look at all of our, which we do every year. We take a look at what our benefits are. Before you, today, I do have some recommendations to enhance our benefits on a few different items. So we'll just kind of go from, from our health insurance all the way down. I did try to analyze or put this in a memo so you can kind of see what, what we would like to recommend to the board of supervisors. So first of all, our health insurance, we are recommending that we continue with our self-insurance plan. We are currently at $75,000 stop loss. We went from 50 to 75 last fiscal year. So this year, we would like to stay at that 75,000. We're not ready to jump up any higher at this point. We do want to recommend adding two different types of services to our plan. Bariatric surgery, that is one that has been excluded ever since we switched from ISAC to our own insurance plans. We went fully insured, bariatric was excluded. We would like to include that as a covered service. And also add a $15,000 lifetime infertility services benefit. Our plan currently pays to like, and Debbie might be able, it, it doesn't cover like in vitro fertilization. It will cover services to look at, you know, reasons for infertility. But it doesn't cover, yeah, more diagnostic, but it doesn't cover the actual procedure. And that's a lifetime benefit of $15,000. So that's pretty standard in the industry. I am also recommending no increase to the actual premiums for FY23. We did see an increase in our stop loss, but overall Walmart feels like our plan looks good. So we are recommending that we just hold those premiums the same. Contribution rates will be the same, employer employee contribution rates also. Yeah.
Know roughly how many sessions to keep that. One, one round typically.
It's going to depend on, on what they do. The diagnostic procedures would not apply to that. But if they get into in vitro fertilization and some of those other transfer procedures, 15 will clearly help, but that might cover 30 to 50% of the cost of infertility treatment, just depending on the circumstances.
Well, it's helpful.
Yeah, currently we have none. So this is.
It's very standard. 15,000 would be Walmart's recommended standard.
And do you mind just for those who don't understand when you say stop loss, what that means?
Oh, sure. So the county pays the first 75,000 for each claimant. So in, in a, in a, in a year. So while the employees have their deductible coinsurance, the county does fund the first 75,000, and then our stop loss will kick in. So the county's liability per claimant is 75,000. So each person on our health plan, we pay the first 75,000 claims. So.
Thank you. That's a term I wasn't familiar with.
No, no.
Till.
And, and that really has helped. You know, if, if we look back four or five years, we, we received when we were fully insured with, with, whether it was Coventry, and then it changed to Aetna. And then we transitioned to Walmart with a partial self-funding. We were experiencing some very high rate increases to the, to 30%. We moved to self-funded. It's worked well. We are able to, you know, we'll have some good years. There'll be some years where we will have quite a few hit stop loss. But, but hopefully, overall, looking at it like a 10-year plan or looking out 10 years, we should be able to stabilize our premium increases. And we have the last few years. We've had some very, last year, I think it was 2.5%. So, so looking at that, that was the whole part of going to, you know, the county paying a percentage of those claims versus waiting, having an insurance company cover those and then seeing where they take us the next year. So. And, and, and looking out 10 years, we'll probably make a recommendation to increase our stop loss to 100,000. Does not come full quite yet.
Yeah.
With making that jump based on our reserves. So is there anything else you want to highlight, Debbie, with our health plan?
No, we've just been incredibly stable in the last 12 months. So with good fortune and good luck, maybe we will be stable the next 12 months. But, but as Alyssa mentioned, the whole idea of self-funding is to try to bend the curve. So in bad years, you have that reserve to pull from. And in good years, you know, you, you, you hold steady. Even if your claims drop, you hold steady so that you rebuild your pool. And then that way, it's just a slow gradual increase. We know health insurance will increase, but if we can keep those increases reasonable and gradual, we can all manage them so much better.
Yeah. Moving on, Delta Dental, we did look a little bit more at the dental plans this year. Kind of looking at where, where we are with, with what people offer. We all know dental doesn't cover tons. It is there. Currently, our plans are at $1,000 max on a year. So, so the, the max benefit you get is $1,000. Well, if you take a look at that, I mean, by the time your cleanings go towards that, that, your x-rays go towards that. And then whatever's left, if, if you're unfortunate to have to have any dental work, and we know dental work is fairly costly. So we did, we did look at that, what we could do and not change our premiums too much. We, we did cost a few things out. We are recommending that we change the benefit period max to 1,500. So we, everybody would have an extra $500 a year to utilize towards whatever dental services they need. We also looked at the orthodontic lifetime max. This is just for 19 years and younger. That's how the orthodontia works. We were at 1,500 on one of our plans. We were at 750 on the other plan. 1,500 is, is where we see most of them at. We are seeing a few plans go to that $2,000 orthodontia benefit. Those are pretty, that's pretty costly to, to put someone through.
Yeah.
Orthodontia treatment, and we all know that. So in, in order to kind of enhance our benefit, we are recommending that we can merge the two plans. And then increase the benefit period, benefit to 1,500 and the orthodontia to 2,000. And I don't know if Debbie wants to talk on it. We, we do have, they were, there were some different coinsurances on the two plans. I don't know if you want to touch on that.
There, there are the plan one that we have today, which is the plan with the $750 orthodontic benefit has an 80/20 cost share for major services. So the, the county on their self-insured plan would pay 80% of those expenses up to a $1,000 benefit. And the member would pay 20%. On the second plan, plan two, those major services are a 50/50 benefit. But you still come out ahead paying a little more in coinsurance as a member on the plan and getting a $1,500 benefit than you do paying 20% with only a $1,000 benefit. Especially given what has happened to the cost of major services over the last handful of years, like endodontics, root canals, crowns. You know, five, six, seven years ago, you could have a root canal done for $1,000. You can't do that anymore. I mean, dental services have escalated quite a bit. So the member cost shares a little bit differently, but they, they come out ahead because they gain more benefit and spend less on the total tab. So it really does make sense to reduce slightly their coinsurance for major services, but then give them more benefit. And we also have a, a carryover program on our Delta Dental plan, both of them right now. But it would remain, it's called to-go. So unused benefit can transfer from one year to the next up to a doubling of your out-of-pocket max. So then raising that out-of-pocket maximum to 1,500 really benefits somebody in year two or three if they have carryover. It really allows them to get the services done that they need to have done.
Is there no carryover?
Excuse me.
Is there a limit on?
Yes, just doubling of your out-of-pocket max. So it would be $3,000.
Yeah. So it would give essentially someone another $1,000 worth. Well, I mean, it, it is, that to-go benefit is really beneficial because we all know that you probably won't have, well, hopefully won't have root canals or crowns year back to back. But you might, in, in a three-year span, need a crown. So, so if you take your, if all you have is cleanings, you do have some added benefit. And it really does help.
And some years you have to have, if you have a root canal, you have to have a crown as well. Sometimes you have to do both, and that's where people really get hurt. They're not, their expectation is that won't happen. Sometimes it does. Now, that's not for orthodontia. To-go is not for orthodontia, just for all other services.
And does that carryover just continue until you hit that doubling?
Yes, as long as you go at least once a year to the dentist for some reason. If you opt not to go, the carryover stops. It can pick back up again the next year, but it stops. So for some during 2020, your carryover remained, but they didn't build or add to it.
So, so what we did, we did, we did take a look at the premiums too. And, and Delta Dental gives suggestive rates, just like any other. We, we looked at them. We do have, we're doing well with, with dental. The year of COVID helped our reserve. So we didn't go quite up to the family recommended rate for this change. We did roughly, I think it was just shy of 6%. So we'll take the single to $35. Let me check at the right, I've looked at so many different plans in the family to 110. So if we look, so plan one's higher than that. So those that are currently on plan one would see a reduction in their monthly benefit. Those that are on plan two would see an increase with that added benefit, both the maximum and the orthodontia. So we, we priced out some higher benefit enhancements. The increase to the premiums were pretty substantial, you know, taking the maximum benefit to 2,000 or greater. That was a huge increase, so we're not quite ready to do that. But I do think enhancing it a little bit and, and to stay competitive. We do, we do get some information from Delta Dental on their book, their dental books. And the thousand is, is in the lower, the lower tier. We're seeing more employers do that 1,500 to 2,000 maximum benefit annually. One thing to note is that to-go benefit though, there aren't, there aren't a lot of that I'm aware of, employers that utilize that benefit.
Because it costs.
It does cost.
But it's worth it.
And cleanings are still covered, like, no cost, no.
They're covered at no cost, but they go to your maximum benefit. Yep. But you have no, you don't pay anything. So we, we really encourage people, go in, you get two cleanings a year. Have dental insurance, utilize that benefit. I think you'd be surprised at the number that don't utilize that.
Yeah.
But. So that's the Delta Dental. Do you have any more questions?
No, the people just won't have a choice.
No, it'll just be one.
This is the doubt.
We took, we, we tried to take the both, the best of both plans. Now we couldn't get it to, you know, the 20% coinsurance would have increased our premiums substantially. So.
Right. It really, it really does improve it really for everybody. And it gets rid of adverse selection by having just one.
I totally understand the reason.
No, I know, no.
Have a choice.
Between the two.
Yeah, yeah. They like to feel like they made a choice.
Although it's interesting how many people just, just keep the same, just keep the same without really analyzing the choices too.
Yeah. Well, and everybody's mentioned it's a little bit different.
Absolutely.
What some people would rather pay a little bit more, so they can pay a little bit less.
That's right.
At the dentist and vice versa. So.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah.
No, you're good. You're good. We did look at just keeping everything the same. The premiums wouldn't have really changed. They're still recommending. It's just that, you know, we do hear, we do hear from some people is that $1,000 doesn't stretch far enough. And it doesn't, you know, and, and I know we'll get the same with the 1,500. It just doesn't.
Right.
But, but it does help overall. So.
Any changes in the vision?
The vision, we, we, there was one option for a very minimal increase in our, in our monthly premiums is to add a level two progressive lenses covered in full. And, and Avises did come back and say, we had about 25 individuals that would have benefited from this. And that's a savings of approximately $120.
120 person.
A person per, and that's just the lenses. And then they do, they do get a little bit more for your, I don't know if they call them level three. It's not much, but they'll give it.
Renticular maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As, as you get up those levels, the, the lenses are substantially more expensive. So this is something Avises reached out with our ritual.
For pennies.
Yeah. And it's a two-year rate guarantee.
Yeah.
So. Yeah.
I think Avises is a great, great option, like a great addition to our package.
If you need glasses, yes.
Yes.
We don't have.
You don't have to take it.
Or contacts. They're really great on both.
Yeah. That's the vision. And then the last piece of our benefit package would be our employer-provided life insurance. We started years ago, I think back in 20, I think 2012, 2013. We went from 15,000 to 25,000. And now I am recommending this year, we go from 25 to 50 for employer-provided life insurance in AT&amp;T. The premium went up just very little, like 0.05 cents per thousand. We haven't had a rate increase from Cigna since we went with them back in, I think it was 2012.
Yeah.
We transitioned 2013. The annual cost to the, to Story County would just be a little over $10,000 a year total to double our benefit for all our employees. So. And, and it is across the board what employers provide. You know, they might provide 25, 50, they might do one times their annual salary. And we've always had just a blanket amount for, for all employees, regardless of position or salary. So I do think, I do think this would help in the unfortunate circumstance that we would have a claim. So. Other than that, that's pretty much everything for the benefit package. Does anybody have any questions? have any questions? It's nice to come with good information.
Yeah.
To be able to increase benefits, not increase premiums.
For health, yeah, that was.
Not a story you hear very often.
No, no, I can remember times in another job where we saw double digit increases.
Year after year.
And it was just terrible.
Yeah.
So, so I think, um, we've done a really good job managing this and self insurance. Saving, saving, getting the benefits from employees and saving money.
I think another piece of this is our wellness program. Um, everybody that, the wellness committee has put together great, you know, and also helps. There is a direct impact on our plan some of the times. So, yeah.
And it's, it's nice not to see, uh, cost of the increase getting consumed by your health insurance costs.
Which is so typical.
Hey, yeah, yeah. Appreciate all the work.
Approval of the FY23 benefits renewal plans presented.
Second. I said, I, 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 thank you so much.
Thank you, Borden. Thank you.
We have departmental reports and, um, starting with engineer quarterly report. Where I hop to the first time.
Well, I'll start out on a positive note as well. Um. Although winter seems like it's lasting forever. We had a number of less than number of, uh, snowstorms on average. So that helped to save money on overtime, salt, fuel and equipment wear and tear. And also because that way we've accomplished quite a bit on our tree and brush cutting in the road right away between storms. So far gravel roads have also held up well with the spring thaw, although it's been a little wet with the rain, but, uh, maybe one or two frost boils we've found. We do plan to start our rock hauling contract actually next Monday if the rain stops. This will cover much of the southwest quarter of the county. Uh, moving on to construction project updates, uh, we have 11 projects planned for, uh, this summer. Everything's been let, uh, would note on the last project in Nevada 24 bridge deck. That was done by quotes instead of letting, because the cost was under the threshold. We only got one quote and it came in at $120,000 and our budget was 65. So we have delayed that one. We're going to look at some other options, maybe doing some patching rather than a full, this is a full deck overlay. It's not that long of a bridge. So that one will be delayed, maybe moved into maintenance and patching instead of construction. Uh, construction design, uh, the 13th Street, 220th Street Rice Project still on hold due to right away negotiations. Secondly, we're working on plans for E57, uh, that's goes through Kelly overlay next year. Since it runs through town, uh, we do have to work with the city on bringing some of the sidewalks up to ADA standards. That's something the DOT is focusing on right now additionally. So we, we met with the city out there last week and showed them one or two. That's a bit of a, a different area since the town's under 500 population about 15 years ago, the, the DOT turned those roads back to the county where they used to be owned by the city. But it's really just through travel portion, the sidewalks, technically the city's responsibility. So those repairs, we may have to work. It was kind of a surprise to them, of course. So they don't have a lot of money to deal with. So we may have to help them out. A little bit, we tossed around maybe 50/50 on what these sidewalk improvements take, but, uh, I'll get back to him what we decide on that. He's going to take to the council first. Um, also as part of that, the next time the E57 covert, when we do overlay jobs, we tend to inspect all the culverts on the road. Before we do that, uh, we did discover a, a covert that's in fairly bad condition right up close to Highway 69. So we like to take advantage of a couple of things. The DOT is going to be closing that intersection down here in the next month or two for about a month and a half to do their Highway 69 turn lane project. So one, the road will be closed and two, they have a road boring contractor coming in to bore under Highway 69. We'd like to use that same contractor to bore a new covert here. I don't think we've ever done a bore before, but, uh, we're able to line certain culverts. This one is so bad it can't be lined. It's just misjointed and it's got three different sections. It's a strange looking, it's very old and strange looking. Uh, so lining's not an option. An open cutting it, uh, would cost more than a bore because you'd have to remove so much pavement. It's 20 to 30 foot deep on the outlet side. So very deep pipe. But, uh, so this was unplanned, but, uh, we're going to hopefully, uh, capture some cost savings with the contractor being on site and then with the road closures as well. Once we get those costs, uh, I'll let you know. Some contract maintenance projects. Um, I mentioned the contract rock haulings should start next week. It's just around 650,000. Asphalt crack ceiling, um, 160,000 for that. Bridge deck patching, um, that's 27 South and Cameron School Road. That's 105,000. We might add to that now with that one I taken out of construction. And we have another one on the R38 county line, the Boone County line that I do have a meeting set up at one to meet Boone County and a contractor. We do need to do some patching on a deck out there as well. Uh, but we're not sure which side of July these will fall on. So that could be out of next fiscal year anyway. Uh, pavement markings, 100,000. We have a paint shortage last year. This year we're doing it a little different. We're actually going out. We found the paint. So we're going to purchase the paint totes and then just hire a local contractor, uh, out of Gilbert to spray it for us. So that way we don't have to get, we get any bidders last year. Country club covert liner, 60,000. That should be done here next month or two. FY22 budget amendment, um, amendments are fairly common for us, but we don't really know if they're going to happen till towards the end of the year. We've had a number of unexpected covert and bridge repairs. So we're kind of on that line. We're watching. Especially this E57 covert. And another bridge repair we're looking at is the 280th Scum River Bridge. That's one that goes back to the Inflor retrieval plant. We did a repair a few years back on one abutment. Now the other one needs it. So we're going to meet a contractor out there soon to look at that. Don't expect, hopefully it'd be 20, maybe $30,000 at the most. But if we don't do these repairs, that first will have to be closed soon. Um, and then a big factor is whether the $160,000 crack ceiling, which side of July that falls on, we never know with crack ceiling. So that could depend whether we have to do the amendment or not, but, uh, we'll let you know. Lastly, we did reduce our rock hauling. Uh, we've really increased that the past two years. This year we're just going to scale it back a little bit because the roads, one, were so hard due to the dry conditions all last year. A lot of dip, need more rock and two, we can make up for some of these additional costs by doing that. Uh, moving on to the road, yeah, road use tax bond funds. We've talked about this a couple of times. We hoping to use that 750,000 we've already bonded for and was planned for 13th Street paving. We can use that now on our local construction projects because it's got a three-year timeframe. It has to be spent by. If 13th does get rejuvenated here this summer, we could, uh, use our local to reimburse that. So that is our current plan. I'm kind of working with Lisa now to make sure she's on board and, uh, our bonding attorney, I have to double check with him. He did comment, we could use it for anything in the county now since the whole county's. Part of the, I forget the term for it. It's designated the whole county except for a certain area for the district for the bonding. So we could use it anywhere in the county now. Uh, moving on to the new federal transportation bill. Fortunately, the news keeps getting worse on this as far as what counties are going to get. It's the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. Uh, Iowa could see around 30% increase in funding. And then there's some direct grant programs, but they have some very high minimums. So I'm not sure we'll qualify for any of those unless, uh, we go, a number of counties, uh, get together and apply together. Uh, federal, federal funding usually goes to the states and then the state decides how much goes to the counties and then the cities as well. The DOT hopes to formulate a funding distribution plan by this July. Uh, there, we have a group of county engineers meeting with them to negotiate. It sounds like counties may end up seeing around more of a 10% increase rather than the 30s. That's a little disappointing. And that hardly keeps up with inflation. Another factor in that is we're going from swap money, which is technically local dollars for us to federally, when you federally federalize a project, people estimate 10 to 15% additional cost. So it's kind of gone right there. Uh, to make it a little worse, CERCA last week updated us on that 10% increase. Actually going to be four that's coming to counties on the roadside of things because that extra five or six percent has to go towards bike trails, the tap funding. We had been putting all that money towards roads in our region and now they're not going to allow that anymore. So really all we're going to see is about a 4% increase in road funding.
That all went with us too.
Yeah, it keeps getting worse. Um, and then I also mentioned the, the swap issue already. And how that's going to require us to do the 20% match. The federally private level work on our end and DOT and they, they reduced a bunch of staff because they don't have to do so much oversight, but now they're going to have to kind of stack back up. So they're going to have a lot more counties to oversee. They audit all our projects and a lot more involved for federally.
Might we see what the change you're talking about, bike trails? Might we see some more money coming there than we've been reaching?
They saw 100% increase in the bike trail funding at CERCA region. So yes, there should be more money there. It didn't start out as a lot. So I think, uh, would they go from 5,300,000 to 600,000 or maybe a little more. So it, it doubled there. Nevada sewer project. Nevada is moving forward with a new sewer alignment outside of the S14 road right away. So that does alleviate a lot of my concerns about the constructability issues. So that'll require them to do a couple of road crossings. We're working on them with the permits for those. That's South S Avenue and 270th. So they have to close those roads while they're doing the open cutting. So we're limiting those to two days. South S, we might piggyback, they're going to do a detour signage. We've got some regrading on Southwest. We'd like to do at the same time so we can take advantage of their detour signs. So it might be closed for another day or two for our work. Additional thing that's not on there, this came up is that Nevada Harrington Park drainage district. I just sent the, the board an invite to the meeting. You don't necessarily have to attend that. I just wanted to make you aware of what was going on. There is a, a virtual meeting on that as well. Let's see, the 20 seconds. So Kent will not be around anymore. He has submitted his comments already, uh, that I can take to the meeting at least. They'd like to improve the park out there. They've tried this multiple times. The issue, it, it's hard, hard to do much with the district. If you dig down and build a pond to take that water, you're getting into the district tile and technically backing up the tile and so our, uh, our duty is to, you know, protect the district to make sure we don't back it up. It's a very old tile and Kent's worried about, we have a lot of blowouts and it's not going to flow as well. We really can't do anything that would cause it to not flow as well as it does right now. So that's what we'll be watching to make sure there's it's done in a way that doesn't back up more water for the district. Uh, DOT construction. The Highway 65, this was, I think, on plan. They last minute, they see that decided there's a number of box cores they needed to replace north of Colo. So there's four of them, I believe, but two of them were impact, uh, Story County.
So where they did request somewhere?
That was unexpected covert collapsed on them. So that was an emergency one that closed it. So they had, but they were overlaying it as well. That's when they discovered a, an emergency closure. The overlay was open to traffic.
It's not the same, it's not the same part.
No. But I think that caused them to inspect the rest of the covers on the stretch and found some that was concerning to them. So we'll have a couple of detours and that'll of course impact the gravel roads in areas who might get some dust complaints and pass those on to the DOT for dust control if necessary. And second one, I already talked about the E57 Highway 69 intersection. They're doing some turn lanes there due to high accident counts. They're giving them a portion of that project, 25 working days or E57 will be closed. So. That'll affect the E57 traffic over to Kelly. We're hoping that Devil Eight start date in May. We want to get that done before our big R30 overlay project starts. We're not closing it. It's one lane traffic, but a lot of people will try to avoid that hopefully. So we hope. 69, I don't believe will ever be closed. That'll stay open. It's just E57 at that intersection. But they will update all those closures on their 511 website. We already talked about the tandem truck, uh, quote, how it came in considerably higher. Just wanted to tell you that we're seeing similar issues with, uh, motor graders. We got our last lease in 2019 and motor graders were 315,000 at that point. And we're seeing them over $400,000 now. So that's a big increase. So in two years, when our leases renew, that the, the costs are going to be considerably higher. So that could take up a bigger chunk of our carryover than if we originally planned, but, uh, fortunately we do have the money there for if needed. Uh, lastly, a couple of job openings. Uh, we had had an engineering technician job open for a long time and the good news is we just filled it yesterday. So that's an update to what's said here. We filled it with a, a maintenance employee, a current maintenance employee, uh, that showed an interest. And I actually think he's going to work out pretty well. So that was a good find internally. Uh, the bad news is we're going to have another position open in maintenance and truck drivers aren't easy to find now either. Well, it's everything else right now. And we did have another, uh, recent resignation, Jim Hovick, a longtime crew leader for 27 years, a story county. Resigned his last day will be this Friday. So that will open up after the shuffling is all done, probably another equipment operator. Once we'll probably have two equipment operators ones open here in the next month or two. That's all I have. Any questions? Thank you.
Now moving on to planning and development's quarterly report. So this is our first quarter, um, quarterly report. So I think there's one slide, the first slide is about permits. Um, it's nothing unusual for this time of year. I think last year, I don't know what happened if you're looking at the chart comparatively. That was a lot. But I will say while I was writing this, I, I've been doing the application and takes on the permits and we did get three new houses in last week. So I think people are starting to want to get their foundations in if they're building this year.
So SFT is single.
Yes, sorry. Single family dwelling.
I spent a little time trying to figure that out and it just came.
I usually change it to say dwelling. I think I forgot. Um, the other permits, we still have a lot of solar arrays going in.
Really?
Yeah. So that's great. Um, more solar arrays than accessory structures like co-conscious. So I, that's an exciting thing to continue to see. Um, and then the average val- value of a new dwelling is still really high. You know, we. You know, we didn't usually have dwellings average around 300,000 until last year and now we're at 293. So that's the dwellings we're seeing go in in the county are really high value. And that's based on a formula that our department uses based on the square footage. It's not based on the current market. So
So bigger house.
They're bigger. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Next slide please. And we've really seen a lot of development all over the county. But I think most of the residences that we're seeing is Prairie Valley starting to get built out. Which is just west of Gilbert. Okay, development cases is pretty typical 2017, 2018. We're really busy. But it's about average for what we've seen. Some conditional use permits included for mineral extraction use south of Ames and asphalt plant south of Ames. There was the Namado wastewater treatment plant sewer pipe modification that our department worked on. And then there were some residential parts subdivisions and a commercial site plant as well. And then our floodplain arguments regarding pipeline installations. And so then I started looking at our other activities that we do in our department. I haven't done this before. So something we do is conceptual review. Andrea mentioned, gosh, we've had a lot of conceptual reviews recently. And so I thought maybe I should track that. And she's right. So that is before you submit a rezoning or subdivision, you have to meet with our department and other county departments and go over just some preliminary comments about what to expect from your application. We had five in the first quarter. Four were for residential subdivisions. Those conceptual reviews, I think staff's comments mainly indicated they were areas that should be annexed by a city prior to being developed or were inappropriate for residential development due to other reasons. So I don't think most will end up making applications. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is floodplain permits. We did a lot of floodplain permits and I think it was mainly Darren. And usually we see them spread out through the construction season, but Darren and Tyler got them all submitted in January. So I think we're done for the year. And we did do one for conservation too. They're doing a stream bank stabilization project. And then the sign permits, we saw a lot of because the Casey's, the Gilbert intersection is redoing its signs for Casey's new logo. That one was quite the review because we have new lighting restrictions on signs. And so because some of the signs are currently lit and they're just changing the faces, not the illumination. They're allowed to be lit still, but the ones on the building, they're actually changing the size of the signs. And so those ones are gonna be required to be turned off an hour after store close. So yeah. And then the work program. I think we're starting to make some good progress on. I'm gonna regret saying that, I'm sure. But the Ames Urban Fringe Plan is moving along. We're gonna take a draft of land use designations to PNC on Wednesday. Construction demolition landfill. We've got a meeting in this afternoon just to talk through as county staff, how we want to proceed with that purchase. Minimum levels of service, we have actually started working on through the Ames Urban Fringe Plan, coming up with standards for new residential subdivisions where they're appropriate to be cited. So I think after the fringe plan process, we could see those adopted countywide potentially. Conservation design standards, Andrea has started working on that one in conjunction with the Ames Urban Fringe Plan. And then review of land development regulations. Our intern will be bringing 85, 91, 92, and 93 to you all probably in May. So that's a medium priority item. And then I need to get with Greg and start code enforcement discussions a little bit more again. Yeah, but I think we've seen some progress in the first quarter. I think it helps that we didn't see 18 development cases like in 2017 that we can actually do some good work. So any questions? We did do interviews for the administrative assistant to position. I'm hoping to hire somebody soon this week, hopefully. So yeah. Yeah, yeah. Okay, great. Thanks. For other reports, upcoming agenda items. Next public comment number two. Comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any actual accountants due to requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. Like to make public comments, forward to the table, raise your hand on Zoom. Public comment number two and move on to laser assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from supervisors.
Just report on briefly on the meeting I went to last night in Roland. It was on the community survey. And I didn't know very much about that, but was there and Greg was also there. They got 34, the community survey got 34% response rate, 34% in the households, which all surveys I seen, I thought that was pretty good. Talked about just a whole bunch of things where people shop, what the opportunities are, housing. And had actually the, it was college of design students from Iowa State that did it similar to what they did at Purview. And they did a very, very good job and they had in fact put together like three develop potential development plans for Roland. And talked about the Dollar General. It still is, I guess, being proposed there and some other things. And I just thought it was really, really good. It was very well attended. Students did a good job. I think it gives them, I thought Amelia, I've got pictures of all the charts because I thought you probably want to look at some of those. They didn't have any handouts, but they they did. They did some good work. So I think it gives them a lot of a lot to work on. And they also highlighted the wastewater and water treatment and water means that they, all the work that they're gonna be doing with the ARPA funds that Story County granted to them. Presentation on what they were doing. It sounded really good. So I was glad to do that. What's coming up? We have a city assessor tonight. I'm gonna go to the treaty tomorrow, the community building, and I hope to also attend the planning and zoning commission meeting. Oh, it's at the training, just moved on my calendar, excuse me. I'll get it back. Plan outcome, new planet zone commission meetings that I've got to say on Urban Fringe. I have a meeting with pertinent senior services, government from their board Thursday, talking about some, just some proposals, some more countywide services they might offer at some point. And that will be it on Monday, next Monday, the rural summit starts. And I'll get that Monday afternoon and Tuesday after. And Wednesday, yeah. Right. Yeah, I'm going to the housing. So I have this afternoon, I have a board of health meeting and then the youth conference board meeting tonight. I have a personal one tomorrow morning, but then I have the children's, yes, the children's behavioral health advisory committee. We have a meeting. Thursday in the office. I also have noted on here the quarterly orientation. Friday, it looks like we have an attorney's office recommendation. And then I think I signed up for this, I better double check to the legislative update in the chamber. So I'm doing that. Sunday afternoon, I have a lunch or I have a workforce meeting. Monday morning, I have another workforce meeting. I have a lunch meeting and then I'm going to do the rural Iowa summit. I'm gonna hold it down later and tour the Roseland technologies in the afternoon. And I was actually in Roland on Friday for, I think Friday, last week for the childcare meeting. So it was a really well attended meeting. And apparently three, I got an email yesterday from Dalton saying that three more of their in-home providers are planning to retire in the next few years. So they're they're really in a squeeze and looking for any ways to open up a new center that they can, as well as supporting new in-home providers coming in. So I told them I would keep my eyes open for any opportunities that we might see. Today, I have a discussion about a debris site this afternoon. And then I have boost board meeting this evening. So I won't be at the Ames assessments meeting. Tomorrow, I have wellness committee meeting and then personal appointment in the evening. Thursday, I have interview with Conry and Associates. And then Thursday afternoon, discussion with Boeing Airport. Alternatives, team meeting, quarterly orientation. And then the county attorney's recognition Friday morning. Friday afternoon, I got Dean Cat. One day I have Story County, I'll do a task force meeting and then Iowa Rural Development Council. I should. Yeah, then I'm gonna be off Friday, so I'm the attorney's recognition. Oh, awesome. Monday, Bryce and I are going to be talking to a group that's working with Naco to video promotional videos for different counties. And Tuesday is a limited edition, limited edition, limited edition agenda just for us.